Okay, good evening everybody at home. This is the Halifax Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, October 23rd. We are being taped by Air 58, which is going to be broadcasted on local cable as well as YouTube. So we will begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tom, would you like to begin? Or would you want me to... Has everybody been able to review the Selectmen minutes of the regular session of August 14th, regular session of August 28th, the regular session of September 11th, and the executive session of July 24th?
Yes.
Do I have a motion for approval of those minutes as printed?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Tom?
Do you want to approve the agenda or...
Oh, yes. I do have one addition to this one though, which is, last night I went to the HOPS meeting and they would like to come in at 9 o'clock just to give us a quick update of HOPS.
They probably could actually come in earlier than that because...
That's what I said.
Well, no, 9 o'clock. They could come in at 8:30.
Alright, I'll send them a text.
Because July 8th is postponed to November 5th.
Well, I also want, I know that we have to have the discussion about the police chief's selection and I want to be able to time it so that everybody who has a stake is here. So why don't we just look at the agenda quickly? And so at 7:45, we have the hearing for the vacation.
Which should take all day.
Okay. And at 8 o'clock, we're talking about, to Steve Hayward, that should take...
Right. Well, it should take longer than that. It's going to be a long-term problem.
Three minutes.
Yeah, and I almost think honestly Charlie, that they have younger children and I think 9 o'clock after they put the kids to bed, like that might work for them because I think that we're gonna, well, alright.
I'm happy it's...
It depends on how many notes you have. Yeah, I know. Alright, I'll send them a text saying, "Why don't you come in at 8:30?" And then we'll see. But I definitely, you know, obviously the priority is to talk about the selection of the police chief. Okay, I'll send them a text now. Alright, go ahead.
All set?
Yes, please.
I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitment. Payroll warrant number 34 for $364,071.61. Payroll warrant number 34 for $122.88. Venda warrant number 35 for $581,589.97. Withholding warrant number 36 for $139,548.92. An ambulance commitment from 9/24/18 to 10/7/18 for $23,999. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the following warrant and commitment. Venda warrant number 37 for $98,065.1. An ambulance commitment number 10 for $10,016. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve payment of the Selectmen's bills dated October 23rd, 2018, to Matthew Bender and Company for law books for $266.10. Reimbursement to Mr. Seelig. We'll have to take a hard look at this one. For $100 for expenses incurred during our interview process for the police chief. WB Mason for $21.91. National Grid monthly electric bill for the town hall of $827.18. Which I think is pretty good because mine's about 30% of that. National Grid for $63.84. And that's it. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So HOPS just answered that they'd be happy to come in at around 8:30.
Go HOP on those?
You know what? I think that gets the weekly award for the best.
Who else do you expect to be here?
No, I know some of the officers. I know that Noria is going to be here, so...
Okay, was there a particular time you thought they'd go by?
Well, I assume that we wouldn't have enough time to do it before our 7:45.
I didn't, I didn't know the logistics.
Well, typically, typically we wouldn't have a big window before 7:45 because our first appointment is at 7:45. And it looked like we were stacked, so I didn't, I'm assuming it's going to happen right after the dog hearing.
Okay. Recycling abatements. You have two requests submitted after the deadline. The deadline was September 5th. The requests were submitted on October 1st and October 17th. And also you have one additional request, but only, this is only a letter submitted from the Haller dated October 23, but no abatement form. Pam, I think, do they have copies of it?
Yes, I have, I have the original. I gave them a cover sheet.
Right. So you have the cover sheets on those, if you wanted to approve or disapprove.
Yeah, there's three of them there.
Yeah. Requests based on what you wanted to provide to you?
I've read them out earlier and my feeling is that it would be unfair to allow these to have the abatement, since we've already refused others who didn't get the paperwork in on time and then have it complete. And that seems to be the same facts that we have here.
Would you like to make a motion to deny these recycling abatements?
Yes.
So it would be bill number 270, 2573, bill number 2286.
And the other one didn't give me a bill because I didn't do an abatement form. I could have went down to, I should have went down there and got the bill.
For the third one, which is...
No, we have the number 1345.
1345.
Yes.
I move that we deny the abatement for the three, four missing applications.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Police meeting appointment obviously due to later tonight.
Yes.
Amima grant in the green folder appears on this. Kim has already signed on behalf of the board, but if the board would affirm, Amima grant for the US Department of Transportation has its materials emergency preparedness grant? I'll move that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Planning board, I've sent in a revised, or a request for a re-revised site plan by Peds Tree Service at 450 Industrial Drive. The original site plan was approved on April 7th. They're now asking for installation of 500 gallon diesel storage tank above ground. I've sent a note to the fire chief asking if a flammable storage license is going to be needed in connection with this, and waiting to hear back from this. No action for the board to take other than if the board wanted to provide any comments back to the planning board, but that's a question I had. My plan is I'll bring this back on November 5th, so my hope is I'll have an answer from the fire chief, at least let the board know. And if they do need a flammable storage license, then I'll inform them and you can set up a hearing and such for later this year.
Okay.
Did we skip one?
Yes. Surplus property.
Yes. Because I don't know where that's located. It's attached to something else. That's what happened. Four items, AT&amp;T answering machine, this is off of the Selectmen's office, which is broken. A Royal 420 typewriter, which was transferred from the veteran's office. Secretarial chair was broken. And 17-inch LCD computer monitor, which is broken. My plan would be to send all these to disposal, even the typewriter, though I will send a note out for the board, departments and officers to find out if anybody needs the typewriter. Otherwise declare a surplus and send it to the disposal.
Would you like us to declare it?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just an update on the building inspector. He had sent a letter to Lawrence and Joy Marble about their properties at 8 and 16 Cedar Street with numerous building code and zoning violations for these properties. There's an appeals period for each letter, both for building permits and for building code and for zoning bylaws. I'll get an update on this for the Selectmen's meeting on November 27th because the period of time is either 30 or 45 days for the appeals process. Just so the board is aware, I sent out the notice on the overnight emergency parking ban. It's simply a reinstatement of what's in our bylaws already, but it's simply that it's more strictly enforced during the period from November 1st to the 31st.
As always, I have an objection, not so much for parking, but because the neighborhood over the avenues is so small, parking on the streets is almost a necessity. So it'll be difficult.
Just a reminder for anybody who has objects on the road, basketball hoops, hockey nets, instead they're going to have to remove them from the town layout, including the shoulder. Since we're not going to be liable for damages for those. I had put in contracts for the HBAC project at the police station in the Sallyport roof. The building committee actually is meeting tonight. I got in a note from Scott Etteron just before the meeting saying they had some concerns about the proposals that were a little bit, so I'm going to ask for the board to pass over signing these.
Oh, that's disappointing.
I think they just want to get a better idea of the actual equipment.
Well, I mean, it certainly came in, I think, less than what we expected it to, so, yeah.
But, so they're, I think, we're going to contract the, when contractors get information about exactly which equipment they're going to use. My hope is I'll bring these back to the board on November 5th.
Thank you.
So, on the garage doors, I'm waiting to hear back from Scott as to when he wants to rebid. The doors at the highway garage, we did not get any bids during the first go-round.
Oh, wow. And then you have the police station Sallyport roof?
Which is the same problem that they had with the AT&amp;T. They want to get more information from the contractor about materials being used and such.
Yeah, I don't remember what we budgeted for that, but I know.
It was, the bids came in lower than...
Much, well, the first one, that came in much lower, so...
Open meaning law and public documents complaint. The ZBDA re-did its executive session held on July 9th concerning mud fest. This time specifying why it was going to executive session. They held a roll call vote to do so and then rediscuss the matter executive session with any votes coming by a roll call. And then for the meeting on August 13th, the ZBDA revised its minutes. The open session, the executive session, which dealt with Amanda states include a list of relevant documents for both sessions. ZBDA had requested a copy of the documents. The Trace Lot had reviewed for the ZBDA executive session and I denied the request since those documents are tied into the executive session, the public session. I'm working with Alasnow about the actual response to Mr. Andrews, so try and get that matter closed. Stop signs for Circa and Laurel. I did talk to Steve Hayward earlier today. He is planning on getting stop signs put in at the intersection sometime next week. There's information about traffic counts, which are less than, fewer than 100 vehicles in any direction on either of those streets on a given day. And the actual, the percentile speed limit isn't too bad. It's either 29 or 30 miles per hour in all directions, so...
That's good.
So that's where things stand with that.
Yeah, so it looks like just that.
And then Harvis Lane with the retention area. The board had received a complaint about the condition of stormwater. Retention area at Summit Street at the end of Harvis Lane, I reported to Highway Surveyor who say it would be included in the project list. We have the official notification from Chief Broderick that he is retiring from police service on November 1st. I know that you were talking with him and he may delay that a few days to give us an opportunity to handle the transition period.
Yes, he expressed today that if there's a need for the community to have him stay through the start of the next chief, that he would be open to that. And I know that last week our board, or last meeting our board voted a letter that I think we all signed, expressing our gratitude to him for the many years that he served as both the chief as well as in the department.
I think we've been fortunate that we've had Chief Broderick available to come over to see when we pointed him in. I think he's got an excellent job, you know, protecting the town and citizens of the town. And I wish him well with his next venture.
And if anybody wanted to take a look, one of my colleagues, Alan West, who probably stayed, done a fee service survey for alcohol licenses for smaller communities. We're basically in the middle. I didn't have any intention of really talking about, do we need to change the fees or anything, but because in terms of finances for the town, it's not material at this point. But information's there if anybody wanted to look at it.
It's 7:45.
We have 7:45.
So at 7:45, we have a hearing for Evergreen Beverage Liquors. It's a continuation. And then we have the Davis Potomac replication hearing. So do we have any updates?
Right. I did talk to Pam Ducci at the end of today. Both license holders are behind on their payment schedule for paying back taxes. So what I'm recommending to the board is that I notify both of them specifically upon which they're behind and that we will continue the hearings on November 5th at 9:45 a.m.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
School building project, just...
I moved it and Troy, second.
The punch lists are being developed and checked off. The door replacement continues sporadically until it's completed in December. As a number of the doors had to be ordered again to meet the town requirements. The window and siding work is complete aside from the punch list. Then the next meeting about the project is Thursday this week at 3:00 p.m.
Okay, could I just ask you, I know that there was some debate about the gutters and having Cape Way do it, or, you know, how is that going?
We got that resolved in that, Laboring got the right materials to put in the town's house and site, and I believe they got installed in the last few days.
They were working on it Saturday.
Okay, so they were going to do it in the, you know, as we discussed a number of times, Cape Way had done a great job in putting the gutters up. And the big concern that we had is that the pieces were not going to go back to where they needed to be and it was sort of being mixed matched. So we feel, is that part of the punch list? Are we going to walk through again and inspect that, would you think?
It can be.
We can discuss that on Thursday.
Okay.
My understanding is that they were done well.
Oh, okay.
But, but again, we can bring that up at the meeting on Thursday and just get confirmation.
To talk to Scott and to Steve and make sure that everything was done correctly.
A little shout-out to Scott Bancroft. He's really taken the lead on this, the punch list and stuff. He's done a decent job with that. Hmm? What's my collar?
He was taking your picture.
It felt weird the whole time.
Right, see, there you go. I just noticed.
I kept waiting for someone to see.
I was going like this and you weren't getting it.
I didn't see you.
Well, no, you're going to take a picture with his collar correct?
I got, I got a bib on.
Okay.
With my glasses on?
Yeah. With him flipping his collar off, he took that picture.
This could be our Christmas card.
Yeah. Season's greetings card. Excellent.
Oh, yeah, season's greetings card.
Like the commercial TV.
I know, I didn't mean anything negative about it.
No, personally, just to say, Christmas.
Look, just invite me over, that's all I...
I know. Charlie's baking cookies and I'm there, I don't care what the occasion is.
Well, I'm waiting for Sandy to bring over the bread. She brings over a bread every year.
Krusty, krusty.
Okay. Okay, so that's it. Oh, gosh, we're going to run out of time. I mean, we're going to have time.
For what?
Basically, we're running out of things on my list.
I know. I timed it wrong.
I'm sorry. IT grant contract. I don't know where that went. It's sitting probably in the office, so...
Alright.
This is for $13,000 for GIS work. Caesar had written the grant to the Community Combat Program as part of its IT specialty grants for GIS work here in Halifax. And the town was awarded $13,000 through his efforts. If the board would approve the grant agreement, then approve having Kim sign it, I'll get to her anyway tonight.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we're practicing our carols. We have 10 minutes. Do you think that's enough time?
Okay, I think so.
Okay. Is that alright with you guys?
Everybody's here who's going to be here.
Yeah, that way we're not wait, because we're running out of stuff to talk about, so it'll be a little awkward.
Why, give us some stuff to talk about? No!
I know. So we have about 10 minutes and I know Steve will be patient if we run a couple minutes late. But I figure what we would do is, is start with Tom and then go to Troy, then go to me and talk about what candidates that stood out. I know that we had some really great candidates and I know personally I was taking a lot of time to struggle between which candidates would be the best fit. So I don't know. Tom, you want to start and tell me who you think? Tell us all who you think.
During the course of the year, we make some reasonably difficult decisions, but this is a very monumental decision. This has a lot of impact to a lot of people in the whole community. I spent a lot of time thinking about this. Any one of the four candidates we interviewed, I think, has the potential to be, do the job. It always comes down to the best fit. Who will assimilate the quickest and who can take over, you know, a department that's been in good shape, not cause a lot of commotion. I'm leaning and I would recommend that we hire our second interviewee, Mr. Shaves, or Shavz.
Shavz.
Shavz. I think he will make a good fit for our department, as well as I know our department. And I'm not pretending that I spend that much time at the police station to really know all the personalities and how everybody interacts. But I think after having been involved in hiring and interviewing people for some 40 years, I think I have a good sense of this particular candidate. I think he'll do a good job. That would be my recommendation.
Troy?
He stole my line. I liked, one of the things that I do, I've been in personnel management for a lot of years, is that personalities, more so than what's on paper. Because anybody can put anything on paper and during the interview and the way people enter the room. And based on my assessment of 1, 2, 3, and 4, they've all got the mechanics. They've all got the mechanics, they've all got the background, you know, and it's going to change, but I'm, I could have, Tom could have just been speaking for me just now because that's, I like Mr. Shavz too. And I think that he, he brings with him some experience, I think, that will do what's good. And more than anything else, I like the personality because as I said before, everybody's got and changes and that's what I, that's what I go by when I think whether it's a fit. And I think he's a smooth fit.
Excellent. So, I too would concur with both of you on Shavz. It was really tough decision as we talk about, you know, I had two people that I kept going sort of back and forth with. But I think that our idea, our vision of who would be the next leader of the police department needed to fit in with the guys. They needed to have, be somebody that you guys could look up to and respect the work that they have done in the past. We certainly had candidates that reflected that. And I think that with Lieutenant Shavz, he just had a way about him. I think the thing that got me was that the first line out of his mouth had to do with the golden rule and that is treating others as if they would want to be treated. And that really sort of struck me. And the fact that integrity is important to him, and I know it's important to everybody in this room, and we want a leader that we can be proud of and we want a leader that can actually, you know, really get excited about being out on the street because we are a small community, so a lot of the times the chief does become a frontline leader in the sense that he's at incidences a lot. And so I feel that, you know, his personality and I think that on paper, obviously he has so many different accreditations, he's done so many different things. And I know we are a small community and some people going into it were a little nervous about somebody coming from such a large city, you know, really adapting to our small community. But I think that he reassured all of us in that interview that he just wants to be part of the small community and he really wants to make a difference in the small community. Not that he doesn't make a difference in the big city that he does today because there are certainly a lot of people that speak so highly about him. But it's different in a small community, where you really do get to know people. And I think that he's interested in creating different programs for our children and seniors alike. And, you know, I think that we will all be very served by him. Certainly we are going to mischieve Broderick tremendously. And so that has been, again, really tough for all of us, I think, to find someone that we feel that could, you know, do a fine job for all of us. And again, as Tom said, our department is a well-run department, you know, so it's not like we have a broken department that needs fixing. So we certainly want the right personality. So, anybody want to make a motion to appoint?
I'll leave that to you.
I move we appoint Lieutenant...
John?
John Shavz, Shavz. I had it right the second time.
We'll have it all ready by next week.
As our new police chief.
Well, there's somebody waiting to pronounce it, you're Shavz.
No, I think it's just Shavz.
Shavz, yeah. I think I heard somebody else pronounce it Shaves the next time.
I did it by mistake.
So I started going down that road because typical guy would say Shavz.
It was me. I totally made, I had nailed it correctly when I first met him in the hallway and then by the time I walked here.
Long as we spelled it right on this check, I'm sure it didn't go right.
Yes. Do I have a second?
I heartily endorse this recommendation. I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I would ask the committee to give me permission to call Lieutenant Shavz and then start negotiations for a contract with him. Could I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Awesome, that was super easy, right?
That was very quick.
I didn't know. Wow.
Well, there's no guns coming out, so...
That was awesome. You guys, thumbs up?
We're good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, that was super quick.
I believe one more thing.
Got to check my car while I go.
I was going to say flat tires.
Just so the boards are aware, town accountant received the free cash notification along with the fund balances. Free cash came in at $1,051,431. We will not spend it in one place.
No.
Aren't we supposed to call that undesigned revenue?
No, no, no.
Fund balance.
Because it's not free. We worked hard for that.
We have little big items on our capital plan this year though.
Actually not cashing those.
No, it's either free nor cash. Right.
The other thing is that our stabilization fund is below our target area right now.
Thanks, Sam.
We have placed to be playing in core work and the work with the treasure collector's office. It's been instrumental in, I know, you know, they've been pushing the tax title process for us very heavily. And I know there are many people in Halifax that are impatient, but we haven't gotten to the point of actually taking over the properties. Well, for our purposes, we'd rather have the money than the properties. So through their work, they're, I mean, they've been sometimes getting $50,000 in a swoop and all that helps fill that free cash up, so...
The cash is much better than owning a bunch of property.
Well, if you own the property, you got to maintain the property, you got to look at it and secure it. That takes time and effort and a lot of resources.
It's a tedious process and then there's the rights of redemption and there's all kinds of things that are involved in it. This is much better.
In terms of the items that are in mail, and I'll get to a couple before we get to 8 o'clock. I know there have been a number of reports about the Montes and being sold.
Yes.
We've received absolutely no paperwork so far. No one's come in about transferring the liquor license or the witnesses. Maybe things are going on there in terms of the sale, but it won't really happen until all the licenses are...
I think it's in the process. My understanding is if it was someone who works there, and I know well, says it's definitely in the process.
I thought it was a lease.
Well, however it's done, we won't...
We've never been officially...
Yeah, and the licenses are still with the current owners. One matter, I just, there's a carol I think from last month, was the Dutch door for the board of health punched over at the law court. You know that was discussed about safety precautions and such? And I don't know that it ever got a final decision.
Well, I know that we had turned it over to the building committee. And I, I remember, I was just watching that. I don't typically watch our show, or I was reading the minutes. That's right, I was reading the minutes. And I think we left it to the, to the building committee to make the decision.
Okay, I'll talk with them then. And then also for incident training, we had another session that was conducted last week. I didn't go to it because in fact Massachusetts Managers Association was also having a workshop about this.
That was in coordination with the police department, police chief.
I'm going to probably do a follow-up with particular buildings and offices. I'm going to work and try to get a guest speaker on the topic later. Because there's sort of, we're looking at, sometimes people are thinking about extreme cases where we're talking about someone who wants to do violence, whether they're throwing things or hitting people, whatever. And at the other end, you just have people banging on the table saying, you know, I hate my tax bill or something. But you do have a number of people acting out in between those two. And we need to give some direction to our employees and department heads of what they can do, that they have a variety of options to deal with that type of situation. And sometimes it might even be something like simply walking away from it. In the sense of if you feel uncomfortable, then get out of that situation. You might feel you need to be polite, or you need to be courteous. You don't have to in those situations. You can leave and get out of there and, you know, call for other people to be there or whatever else. So I'll be working with departments about that.
Awesome. It's eight o'clock.
Yes.
So I don't, I was just kind of talking to Sue. Yeah, so I think, should we, should we, I'll try calling.
Sue's still trashing the child?
I'll call Steve.
No, she's recycling.
I'll call Steve too.
Okay. Maybe he'll answer your phone because he's ignoring my taps.
You can't trash that. Well, you got a bodyguard with you now, something?
The what?
You got a bodyguard with you?
Yeah. This is Troy. You work for the.
The who, the what?
They are behind in their payments.
You went to Austin, you don't like that in your office next door?
We're giving.
I'm only joking. You know, I've always heard a lot of people say that, head cold, but I've never heard of any other type of cold other than the cold right there.
There's not many foot colds out there, right?
Yeah, foot cold, you know, freezing. Well, I'm sorry you don't feel well. And you got to come in here and face this group. Tornado threat, windstorm, so bad.
Anyone else hear the sirens? East third water and rain?
What for the tornado?
All I know is that my, interrupting my TV program. Tornado worries, Bristol County, Plymouth County.
Was it through the pan or just? Oh, no, they're just, yeah, right, yeah.
There's only one signature.
That's okay. I mean, yeah. And then we can sort of fill him in. I hope he's okay.
Nicely done.
Thanks for coming in, Sue. Hi, how are you?
Todd?
Hi.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, they've been in the stand for two years. I haven't been any of them.
Well, Susan, can you formally introduce Todd to our TV audience?
Todd was from D P C, he's a municipal assistant. Yes, he helps all the towns. And he shares the office next door. And it's wonderful because I don't have to go to any meetings anymore. He just tells me in English what happens.
I love being an Englisher. That's awesome.
And you don't have to glaze the ride.
He doesn't trash talk you. He doesn't trash talk you.
I recycle talk.
No, he trash talks.
So the reason I asked for this discussion is during, during the last year, and especially even more so during the last six months, the market, however else we'll put it, for both trash and recycling has had some dramatic changes. It's going to, it's not just affecting Halifax. I think if most people have read, you know, watched TV even, or read newspapers or whatever, they've seen plenty of articles, plenty of stories about the problems that the cities and towns across the country, not just here in Massachusetts, are having disposing of their recyclers. To the point that in some cases, some communities are being asked to spend more on a per ton basis for recycling than for trash. Now, how long this is going to be and what that might mean in terms of the markets, but also in terms of our own financing of the operations. We don't know if this is the short term, long term, but I wanted to have this discussion because I don't want people to be surprised, let's say for even the year we're in, let alone next year, that they may see some significant changes, both in terms of how we finance the programs, but also in terms of how we deal with those materials. So I asked you all and Steve to come in and talk to the board at least a little bit, so we can get the board up to speed on the subject too.
Well, we, we got an IQ grant, which was twenty thousand dollars. And we actually have people opening bins right now to pull the plastic bags out. We're trying to keep the recycling as clean as possible. Because the cleaner it is, the better it is at the processing plant, and the better they are selling it today. And so that's what we're doing on our end.
So Susan, just to even back up further, one of the problems that the end game is having is China especially. China had said in the last few months, we were a big buyer of American recyclables. You want to give us the glass and the paper and everything else, we'll take it. Well, what happened was that they said, you're the quality, this is the amount of contamination of non-recyclable materials that we're getting, or if you've separated it out, it isn't really separated out very well, is not what we want. We, there's a lot of recyclable material out there in the world. We'd rather take stuff that is cleanly not contaminated, or it's very much more separated than we've been able to do. So what happens is, in essence, figured as in almost against California, not maybe even there, but many states of Massachusetts, but it reaches a point, and the buyers who would then eventually get it to China are saying, China doesn't want it. I don't want it. You need to keep it, or you need to pay us a lot more money to deal with it. Sorry.
And that's exactly, he knows more about all that kind of stuff because that's his job.
All right, so that was a good lead I had.
You can be more specific.
So about a year ago, China came up with, actually, this guy actually goes back about almost twelve years ago now, is when they said, start cleaning up your act, we're not going to take your, your material. So we've been warned for a long time. And it's not just us, it's not just the country, it's the entire world who's been on notice. And we were sending them, China took in about forty percent of the world's recyclable materials. Paper, plastics, which was a big one, most of the plastics went to China. Cardboard, they're a huge buyer because they reprocess it.
And send it back.
During the holidays, so they need that cardboard. So what happened, they put us on notice back then. And it was about a year ago when they finally, the new premier there, president, president, basically woke up and he saw a documentary that was made about their environment and how really awful it is. It's really bad.
About a plastic bag soaked in the water.
They've contaminated their soil, they've contaminated their air, Beijing Olympics, all this, all the stuff in the air. What was it, cars? It was from the mills. And the mills were actually burning stuff. So whatever they couldn't process, they would throw it out back, set it on fire. And that led to this walk home. So the premier starts to dig into this a little bit more, and he says, that's it, we're not taking it anymore. We are not the world's dump. He was upset. I don't blame him, to be honest.
Right.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't put up with that.
No.
So he cut it down to basically, it was point zero, it was point one percent contamination. And the best way I can equate that to is you've got a forty yard, actually it was more like a forty foot shipping container, fifty-three foot shipping container that goes overseas. That holds a lot of material. It's about thirty thousand, forty thousand pounds of material. That one can in a box, in a, in a box full of cardboard.
Yeah.
That's your, that's your limit.
That's the limit.
Basically, that, that whole load's coming back here. They wouldn't even accept it. They would send it right back. That one can, new shipping container.
It sounds like the registry, you walk in without your, your birth certificate, you can't get your license.
Exactly. So they've loosened up the regulations. Now it's point five percent. However, our mills can't even deal with that. So the mills, I mean, the MERS, the material recovery facilities, which is where our recycling goes to. The west coast has better, better systems out there than, they spend hundreds of millions of dollars on the MERS. Our stuff here, we've got Avon, which is waste management, we've got Casella out off the Pike, was it Auburn? And we've got Harpy out there as well. So those are really the local mills, then they've got a bunch others up north. So there's, there's eight of them across the state. One of them is actually owned by Mass D E P, which is run by waste management.
When you say mills.
I mean, MERS, material recovery facilities.
Okay, those who are doing separation, taking the separation and bringing the material.
That's where your curbside stuff goes to, to get separated out into paper, plastics, and cardboard. Ours are very, very old. And unfortunately, the private industry has not invested in the local MERS as much as they should have. The contamination rate, and I've been on these tours, you've seen Avon as well, it, the bales are pretty bad. I mean, I'm not going to lie. And a lot of it has to do with how we do it at our level, which is the residential level.
Okay.
And the commercial level, which is this whole separate ballgame. But we're worried about the residential because that's my side of the business. So for Halifax, you've got a really, really clean screen. You guys are very clean, out of most of them. Most of them are running, I'd say twenty to forty percent contamination. Now.
Wow.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And there's some that are even higher, so it's scary.
Well, we were one of the first towns in the, in this Commonwealth to recycle, so we've been doing a lot longer.
The big totes we've been hiding stuff in either.
Yeah, exactly.
It's harder, it's harder to hide stuff here. So when China went to the point five contamination ratio, the mills here can't even deal with it. They're, they're, they're happy with basically fifteen percent. That stuff doesn't sell. Fifteen percent China will buy. And they flat out said, we're not going to buy it anymore. It's not that they're not taking material, it's that they will not take it if it's contaminated. So what they've done in the meantime, and trying to cut this, it's a very long story, is now China's sending inspectors out here for every single load that goes to the docks, which gets put on a shipping container on a boat to go to China. They inspect every single load that leaves this country. That's a lot of inspectors. It's a huge infrastructure. So there was a lag time there where they weren't even taking any material for about six weeks because they had to get the inspectors up to speed on what to look for at each one of these loads. I was out talking to Ben Harvey, who owns Harvey and Sons. And, and he flat outside, he goes, before we ship this to the inspectors, a Chinese inspector has to look at every single load. Every load, and they will tear one apart. They will take a bail out of each load. They'll tear it apart and see what's in there. And if it doesn't meet the spec, it stays here. So what happens is, because a lot of the stuff didn't meet the specs, now it gets run through the system again. So now you're running the same material over the belt twice. You're having people sort it two times. That wasn't even making the grade.
You paid them.
So you do it a third time. So what happened is that material that you were once paying twenty dollars a ton to get rid of is now ninety dollars a ton because it's being run over the belts two and three times to clean it up to a standard that meets China's standard.
Oh, mamma mia.
Yeah, and that's why the rates are going up. That's a, it's a huge part of it right there. It's a, it's a very labor-intensive business to be in.
No way to do it.
Yeah, and they've doubled or tripled the amount of pickers they have on there because not everything's automated. Very small portion of it gets pulled out through, you know, optional sorting, trommels, all, it's really cool. If you guys haven't taken a tour of Avon, it's really.
I've been there.
Yeah.
It doesn't help that the federal government is putting tariffs on everything that can bring it out.
That hasn't helped anything out there. So, and I can't verify that it's not helping, but I can personally, I can say, yeah, that didn't help.
If you go by what's on the news, the response that they're saying, well, if you're going to do, put a tariff on my aluminum, and this is what we're going to do, we change this, so it's tit for tat.
Yeah. So keep in mind, what's going on is not just affecting Halifax. It's not just affecting my region, which is thirty-one municipalities that we go for. It's not just affecting the state, it's affecting the entire world. Britain's got problems, Europe's got problems, Russia's got problems getting stuff around the world. So what they're working on now is getting the mills here up online. Now, Seven, Nine Dragons, I think it's out of China, they own a bunch of mills over there. They actually bought, I think in the last six months, they bought nine mills here. So they're getting them online so we can actually keep our materials in the states. The big one though is the plastics. So plastics is a huge issue because China took a majority of the plastics from the world. They don't want those anymore. So what it boils down to, in the state which went through a whole process, which is now the recycle smart ma.org website, which has a really cool recyclopedia, I'll do a little pitch for that.
Recyclopedia.
Recyclopedia. You can type in any product in there, if you can't find it, you can submit it and they'll add it. But I think there's, there are probably up to eight hundred different items now, you know, cans, jars, you know, plastic jugs.
This type of battery versus that type of battery for us.
Yes, is this recyclable or is this going to?
And the plastics, okay. Is it a plastic fork? Okay. How about plastic plate? Or no, okay. How about the container actually? What are the differences between those, which can be recycled, which can't?
All that stuff's in there. So like clear, clear plastic clam shells, yes. Black plastic clam shells, no. So, and it goes into that much detail. It's just, it's amazing amount of information they have. It's a really great resource.
Yeah, but you know, and I don't mean to cut you off. Do we own anything? Americans own anything in, in the country anymore?
I wish we owned more.
I mean, most of our farmland and industrial pieces and everything is, is owned by a foreign entity. Now all of a sudden, we, we're trashing ourselves and get, get foreigners coming in straight now.
China's buying the mills here, which is even blather. So, I mean, it's, it's going to take some time for us to build the infrastructure here or get it back up and running. Because once you shut down a mill, and a lot of mills went out over the last twenty-five years because China was buying the stuff for such a premium, they were a billion dollar, what, a day economy over there, and they wanted all this material. It was feeding their, their, their engine and keeping it going. Now that stopped, you know, and it hasn't completely stopped. There's other, other countries that are picking up some of the slack, but India was taking a lot of stuff. They finally just said, no more plastics because there's too many, they can't deal with it.
Really?
Vietnam was taking a bunch, but they said, no, the Philippines is about to cut everybody off.
Oh, yeah.
Japan's got stopped.
Small island.
So it's, 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 the whole engine has slowed down a little bit. But we're hoping it picks up, you know, the mills are coming online, it'll still take some time, but, you know, I think.
Thank you so much for the history. That was really great.
Okay, I, I know we have an eight fifteen, and if you could run a few minutes over. My concern, I know there's long-term trends and we're, there's a big question mark to some extent there. Short term, how are we going to be dealing with that here in Halifax?
Well, I mean, I don't know if we are eventually going to have to raise that recycling fee. Yeah, I mean, right now, we're, we're still not paying more than trash. We still have not hit that limit yet. I don't know, because, you know, they've steadily, they, they're going up. Where, right now, because I, we're at seventy-two dollars and fifty-three cents a ton. Was, was that on September tonnage.
Right, okay. When we sent our recycling to Avon, that's what, how much it costs us?
Yeah. Now, last July, we were thirty-five dollars a ton.
Significant.
So, I mean, it's substantial.
And with the cost of fuel and transportation and everything.
Well, yeah, we have the truck that tries to handle it. You know, we, we've got a grant for a compactor, so we're going to be saving a lot of money on calls.
Right.
And that should be coming in by the end of October, beginning of November. We already have the pad wood, which Scott's working on the electrical, we're ready to go. And that's going to save a ton of money on calls because normally the containers that we pull out are about two, maybe two tons, and it's a hundred and eighty-two dollars to have it pulled. We're going to get, what, ten or twelve tons in that.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Huge. So I think over the next few months, we sort of look at that and confirm that we're going to be saving a lot with that. And then I, I don't think it's a bad idea for the, you know, for the financials team or, you know, Sandy to be involved to, you know, whether it's the whole financial team or just Sandy and Sue and you. And I'm happy to, you know, sit down and have that conversation to look at, you know, the trends of the cost.
But I guess what, the real point is that whether it's funded under the recycling fee, whether we use the current fund balance, which we still have some in there.
Yeah.
It's not, we're not going to make, it's not going to disappear tomorrow. And we may borrow time, in essence, to hope that we can use the fund balance to stave off having to raise the fees or use other sources of revenue to balance off the recycling budget.
But the main problem is though, is that we've got to, that have to hope these citizens will dispose of their recyclables in the proper manner. And they bring them in, and they're clean, and they're.
And that's the plus of the compactor, because where the compactor is, is where the tenant's eyes are going.
Right, so they can see it.
The problem is our containers are a basket, it turns this back, there's a bicycle in there, you know, it needs to be constant.
But I think just getting the word out to the residents to remind them that, why it's important. And Charlie, you know that we have, you know, the fund balance, but also that we fund that with capital plan in the sense of the, the truck, a very expensive piece of equipment. And, you know, I understand that we may look at using some of it, but we have to really plan it out for what, you know, the next year that we would need to purchase that truck.
Well, also, it's one of the reasons why we love the fee where it was, that we have fund balance. In fact, in case expenses came in higher.
And the other thing we look at is, you know, every year we have more of these recycling rebates, you know, of, yeah. Of eight months, thank you. And that affects income, you know, so we need to sort of project that out, that we would suspect that we would have even less income over the years, the more people who go to private trash.
And some of the signage is helping now, you see all around town. That definitely, when they're constantly driving by that, seeing no bags, no bags, we're definitely seeing a, a drop.
Oh, okay, okay.
Definitely helps.
Okay, perfect. Awesome.
Thank you.
Boy, this was really very informative, so I really wanted to. I'm sorry that we haven't come down, I know. I'm sorry that we haven't come down and visit you. But we will, we will come see you.
So how do we see you on your TV program, so when you talk about all these things and everything?
We do enjoy the trash talk.
Or for G P, I'm not allowed to talk for us.
We enjoy the trash.
You've got a luck, I was sitting right next to you.
Yeah.
All kidding aside, you know, with the access of the availability of cable access, some kind of a presentation that we could give to cable wouldn't be a bad thing.
Even a demonstration, if you take the camera down there showing the thing.
Do a nice demonstration.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And talk about the types of recycling.
Yeah. Awesome.
I think that could be helpful.
Thanks so much.
We're actually going to have a, a hole in the wall, and it's going outside. So when they come in the building, they're going to dump right in the, it's going to have like a little bit of an angle. It's going to go down and shoot outside to the.
I used to go to Hole in the Wall all the time.
Different type of place, so.
Different type of place, so.
Shoot, shoot.
They should work out.
Hope you feel better, so.
Thank you.
Now you've got a little touch of a cold, you need to go to Florida.
Did you get your flu shot?
No, no, I haven't, I haven't gotten one.
They're doing them free up in the town all year, come on.
I don't stop at the shop till I get to spend all my grocery coupons.
Well, there you go.
I love coupons.
Thank you, Tom, no, no, you were great, you were great, thank you. That was really very informative. Okay, so we are here for a dog hearing. So could all of the parties that are here come to the front row, if that's okay? And we're gonna ask you to give Pam your name, your address, and we're gonna swear you in.
How are you, Nori?
Good, how are you?
Trying to be good.
Just let the dog know.
Okay. Okay, um, Pam, Angela, and actually, we'll hold it, okay, and your address, eleven North Wind.
Right.
Oh, there it is. So could you just stand and raise your hand, your right hand, and we'll need to swear you in? Yes, anybody who's gonna speak is gonna have to be sworn in.
Do you swear the top of your little tooth during this proceeding until that's locked?
Yes.
Okay, please sit down, thank you. All right, I'm gonna first ask Nori to explain what she knows about this incident.
Basically, on nine thirty eighteen, at approximately ten o'clock, we had a report that there was an incident on, on Lake Street. The dog owner's boyfriend was walking their lab-type dog. He was on a leash, and he had a gentle lead collar, appeared to be a muzzle.
Okay.
To the victim. Victim said that she walked up and, her and her boyfriend walked up and asked permission to pet the dog. It was a young dog, it was under a year, a year old. So she said while she was bending down to pat the dog, the dog lunged at her, supposedly in an aggressive manner.
Okay.
It hit her head, she, she said that it may have scratched her cheek with its cane. She really wasn't sure what happened. When I interviewed, what's his name? Morgan, Morgan Burkhardt, who was walking the dog, which is her boyfriend, he stated that the dog did jump up. She had sunglasses on that were knocked off, so...
Oh, that could have cut her.
That, possibly, so, basically, what happened is, no report was made to the police, animal control, or anything.
Hospital.
There was no, she did not go to the hospital at the time of the incident when I interviewed her.
Okay, so...
And how long after the incident was that?
Uh, that was ten one, so it was a couple of days, a couple of days after.
So how did you become aware of this incident?
This was through the Board of Health, they received, well, actually, it was the clerk's office, who received two long-winded phone messages saying that his girlfriend was bitten.
Okay.
And that he, he only wanted owner information, that was, that was basically it. He didn't wanna make notification to the Board of Health or to Animal Control, or, they just basically wanted owner information of the dog.
Thank you, Pam, we notified the victim to be here this evening?
Oh, I did, yeah.
And you have signed?
Well, I don't, I don't send her certified, I only send out, but I did send it.
Okay, perfect.
I said that her presence, you know, where she wasn't requesting it, her presence wasn't mandatory in order for action to be taken. But you may attend the hearing.
Did, did, did he or she, the supposedly victim, questioned the individual who was walking the dog as to who he was and where the dog lived, or anything of that nature, at that time?
No, no, not at that time. I think the boyfriend was, was bent on, he said, "I already notified Morgan and Morgan and..."
Okay, I understand. So have you visited with the dog? What is your impression of the dog?
I didn't visit with the dog, Brian claimed the animal inspector when he was walking with the dog, you know, but it sounded like a big goofy dog to me.
Okay.
Um, that's the indication I got, he's big, he's husky, and...
And what, what kind of a dog is he?
He is, I actually did a DNA panel.
Oh, you did?
I'm a, I'm a neuroscientician, he came back as...
Oh.
She's a veterinary technician, no. Um, he came back as a little bit of German Shepherd, Staffordshire Terrier, Golden Retriever, um, what was the last one?
And a Pachytaena parvina.
And everyone thought he was a great dog, and lab, yeah.
Okay, and so tell us about the temperament and what do you think happened?
Um, so my boyfriend is unfortunately sick this time of the year. Like, I got, I just got home from work not too long ago, I was telling him Instagram, I was like, "Why are you out of bed?" I have to get out of bed. But when, I was actually outside, we were working on our house that day when Morgan came back, and he was like, "Bane just jumped at this lady's face," and he was like, knocked her sunglasses off, and like, he was like, they, they just, they were like, "Oh, don't even worry, he's a puppy, don't worry," and then they went their separate ways. Nothing was said about anger, nothing was said about, like, any viciousness, and he was a hu, because he's a big puppy, and he's like, "I'm gonna jump because I love you." And, and when he told me this, I didn't even think twice about it, I was like, "Oh, Bane, like, he's a big goofy dog," like, of course he did that.
How old is Bane?
He just turned a year old, actually, when he was on quarantine, he turned a year old and his daycare was going through him a birthday party.
Well, I'm sure he'll understand, I'm sure he wasn't looking at the calendar. So you've had Bane for how long?
We got him Christmas of last year as a baby's present. Um, we adopted him from a Redford County Humane Society, and, as I know, his litter was abandoned in a house down in Suffolk.
That's okay, I don't need to know that. My question for you though, is since you've received the dog and you are a vet tech, then I'm sure that you had plans on training your dog not to jump up on people. So what have you done since this?
Um, so he goes to an Emmy's Bargain Lot, which I have information right here, which has a trainer on staff there that we have been working with.
And when did you start that training?
Um, I started that training, I started taking Bane to Emmy's Bargain Lot February. And of course, he's a dog, he has those moments where he's gonna be excited and jump out of excitement, um, and I don't know what happened.
And so typically, he will correct himself, if you witnessed that?
Yeah, so he usually steps back and sits down, and then he listens. We have the gentle leader harness on his muzzle because he's a strong dog and he pulls, and that helps us walk him easier.
Okay, so I would suggest that when you or your spouse take the dog for a walk and somebody asks to pet it, that you would make sure that the dog is sitting before you do that. So, and, so how often does he attend training?
Um, he goes twice a week to this daycare facility, which has a trainer on staff, but we haven't done training. We did the initial training that February with him, but he knows a lot of commands and he listens very well.
Yeah, I had him replacement surgery in May, and I made said a lot of the summer, and he listens, and you say, "Sit," and he knows commands. He just gets excited, but...
I just have one other question for you, Nori, did the individual who supposedly scratched a bit, whatever, did she kneel down to feed his dog, she lean over?
She said she bent down to pet the dog.
First thought is, it's never a good idea to go and pet a dog that you don't know.
He's a big dog.
Yeah, I, I, I don't even see that as a good idea in, in a stretch.
And my thought was, she thought the black thing was a muzzle, she referred to it as a muzzle.
No matter what, she...
Right, and is a dog friendly, I mean, you would be leery right then and there. I mean, and if it's a big puppy, you know there's a possibility they're gonna jump.
And that's what they do. But as far as we know, we, we don't have any verification of any puncture wounds or any of that kind of stuff.
In hospitals, you know.
It was supposedly their first date, the victim lives in Quincy. So after the phone interview, I heard no more from her. Or, or, or the boyfriend, uh, likes reading.
Okay, so I would suggest that you continue with the training, and again, my suggestion to you would be, when you take the dog for a walk and you make sure that if somebody approaches, the dog fits and all those wonderful things.
I'd just say no.
I just, yeah, it's safer.
Yeah, that seems to be the most reasonable course of action.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think with the continued training and not allowing people other than yourself to pet the dog unless you, unless you know them, because it's, it's dangerous to let a stranger come on because you don't know what they were gonna do, they might hurt the dog.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you, you never know.
So I would like a motion to take no action at this time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think we ought to send a letter to her stating that she shouldn't walk the dog on a leash and then continue the training and everything that we've said.
Keep whatever that thing is on.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Thank you so much for coming in, thank you again, Nori, we do love when you come around.
And I'm sorry you had to make the long trip from Plymouth to go all the way down there.
I love this dog, I support the dog, and my daughter's a lot...
I have millions of letters from people, I don't know if you want to keep them on file?
Um, you know, we could keep them on file.
I don't, I have, I have it all on email. Okay, okay, thank you.
One last question, where do you work?
I work at Norville Vet Hospital, I'm an anesthesiologist there.
Awesome.
Oh, I used to do full body.
Yeah, blood dry, yeah, it's easy, on a moving target.
Goodbye, boy, goodbye. We love Nori. We love Nori.
Oh, no.
Okay, so we are here, why don't you guys come to the front row, if you don't mind?
Come on up here.
So I was saying earlier, you weren't here, besides how much we love you all, and the rest of the group that couldn't be here.
Speak for yourself.
So I met with Hops last night, and we were talking about, you know, timetable and all those kinds of things, and they wanted to be able to have an opportunity to come in and talk about the preparation of the site for the new Hops, so here they are.
Yeah, it's, it's, we're getting close, it's exciting, you know, after our long journey, we're, we're kinda getting close to the finish line, which is nice.
It's been one heck of a journey.
I've had a lot of people ask me when it...
Oh, I know, I know, believe me, that's, when I see people, that's one of the first...
You dodged it in the bushes.
With kids, it's like, what, what, what are you gonna do?
No, so what we're excited about is, what we're, we're thinking we're doing, is we'd like to, to get the site as prepped as possible before the winter, before the weather turns. We were kinda holding out a little bit to, to give the kids some more time with what's there, you know, with the swings and the slides, I know Soccer still has another three weeks or so. But we'd like to, with your approval, get the okay to kinda raise the current site now, to get it ready so that when, when we do get the thaw, we don't have to deconstruct and then construct, we're ready to hit the ground running. So with that said, I figured it would make sense to throw that by you guys, make sure you're okay with it. Again, very cognizant of trying to leave it as long as possible, you know, so that kids can use it. Because I know there are still kids, even though it's forty degrees, you'll still get kids up there.
When you raise it, are you even gonna take everything out, there's not gonna be anything stuck out of the ground?
Completely done, completely gone, yeah, everything is...
Gonna level everything, because that, my only concern would be if some buyers or some would love it.
No, it's gonna, there's gonna be nothing left. And the other thing I'd like to talk to you guys about too is, I don't wanna, if there's anything reusable, I'd like to try not to throw away stuff. I know there's been interest in some of the parts to use, I know that Pete Veroni with Softball was wondering about maybe down the line putting something over at law. So there's a structure there, a two-to-five-year-old structure, for two-to-five-year-olds, that is still in pretty decent shape. So what I was suggesting is maybe, and I was actually talking with Steve, if he could maybe house it for the winter.
I was gonna say, there might be some room down in the market.
Right, yeah, so house whatever's usable, you know, and then, even if we're not gonna use it all, house what we can, and then that gives us options.
Yeah, you can look at it again.
See it, right, revisit it.
Sometimes you can mix and match and...
Correct, yeah, so, I just don't wanna landfill, you know, I don't, I just wanna throw it away, just throw it away, you know. The other thing too is, I know peystone, I was talking with Mr. Bowdre over at the school, and there's a lot of peystone over there, as my shoes can tell you. So I know Mr. Bowdre was interested in maybe using some of that peystone for, around the school. So again, I was talking with Steve, and he was thinking maybe he could dump truck it over, make a big pile over at the town.
How deep is that, about six inches?
Well, it's supposed to be at least nine, but I know, over the years, it's, it's washed up.
Unfortunately, people like you are taking away in their shoes.
That's it, yeah, it's like Shawshank, I film Hops, and shake it out. But yeah, so, so we wanna, we wanna raise it with, with an eye on reusing whatever we can, obviously, if there's a safety issue. Yeah, recycle, reuse, reuse, recycle, right? So, so we just wanna make sure that you guys are okay with getting the plan in motion, I know up the town, you know, the last time we took it down, I know there was...
When you're gonna, when you're talking about raising it?
I was thinking around November, middle of November, when Soccer's done, and, you know, the sport season kinda shifts into, you know, basketball and the indoor stuff.
Yeah, that, that would be a good appropriate time, and you'll probably just beat the weather too.
That's the idea, that's the idea, so, just wanted to give you guys a timeline, as far as the build, we're looking around the April vacation week to build, I have to confirm with the company that we're looking at.
How long a period?
What's that?
What's the ETA, is, that's the time of day?
Uh, it's, it's, believe it or not, it's a weekend, it's Thursday through Sunday.
Really?
Yeah, it's Thursdays, Sundays. So, yeah, so the town will be on the hook to try to get it as prepped as possible, as far as, you know, footings and stuff and that kind of stuff. But as far as the construction goes, it's a supervised build, where they'll provide four or five, you know, managers on site, and then it'll be a strictly volunteer workforce, similar to what they did on the first Hops.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was approaching.
Yeah, right, I wasn't here then, but, and I know it's a sense of pride with a lot of people that, every, when I say I'm involved with Hops, their first thing is, "Oh, I helped build the first one."
I was on the first committee when that...
There you go, yeah, so, so yeah, we wanna try to hearken back to that stuff too.
That was only five years ago.
Yeah, we might be off twenty or so there, true. So yeah, yeah, I think it was, I think my research added that, like, ninety-one, ninety, ninety-nine.
Yeah, it was, it was ninety-one.
They started building in ninety...
Because my son was an infant when, when it was really...
Yeah, and just money-wise too, we're at about two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars, which is great. Our goal originally was two-fifty, so we're still, and we're being taken now, so it's all the masses, we're still, we're still...
Short a dime.
Yeah, we're still a little bit short, but I mean, we can, we can kinda skew our stuff to fit our budget, you know, if we have to scale back on something.
You've got a little time.
We have room for expansion.
Exactly, there you go, so, yeah, so that's what we're kinda, that's where we're kinda at, just wanted to make sure you guys are okay with getting kinda a jump on it before we get to...
I'm getting a little tired of thanking you, you know.
I'm getting tired of coming in and being thanked, to be honest.
Yeah, thanking you for all the hard work you've done.
It is one, nothing Red Sox, I don't know.
Oh, it is? All right, well, it was very nice seeing you, I'll take a motion.
What are you doing?
It's a first inning, first inning, bottom of the first.
So what, we get everybody out of here, quickie?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, all right.
I don't care.
All right, so do I have a motion to allow the raising of Hops from after the sports?
And the preparation?
Yes.
What was the date again you're hoping for?
We're thinking mid-November.
Mid-November, we didn't have a hard, fast date, I, you know, wanna work with...
We just need to do plenty of publicity that that's happening.
Yes, and, and we would go, we have a decent presence online too, so we would go on and explain, you know, before you get the pitchforks and torches.
Yeah, we, we don't provide the shock value.
Exactly, so we will make sure people know that this is a good thing, you know, you know, that you have to take a little bit of a step back before you can take a step forward.
Perfect, so Tom, I think, made that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
And really, thanks are not even enough, so really, you know how much we all feel, you know how we all feel.
Hold on, let's reserve this.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, now get the heck out.
Yeah, I'm still looking for the cow flock.
Yeah, I know, we still hope to do more events, I know, sorry, she's giving me the hook.
I'm only teasing, you know we love.
Because we all, we still have one more appointment, so...
We love you.
Even if you leave, we can...
You can chat, you can chat.
Oh, yeah, what time is your next appointment?
Five minutes ago.
You have questions, any other, uh...
We're good.
Yeah, you're gonna have someplace for old people to sit over and watch the grand chase.
We'll have, you know, that little fenced-off Troy area, so you can get there, you can just kinda...
So I can just sit there and watch, yeah, I remember back when...
Exactly.
Is it the wall or benches where we're doing, huh?
We're gonna do, that's a good question, Tom, we're gonna do the, it's kinda like five benches, where we're going to, what would you call them, Sharon, like, they're about three feet high, and they're just basically like blocks, like, there's no back to them, just almost like a sitting, like those sitting benches that are on the other side of the hill. And that, we're gonna sell brick faces, we've already sold a number of them already, but we're working on... Yeah, exactly, and we're trying to get that rush out, you know, before the holiday comes too, so maybe that could... comes too, so maybe that can...
Who does the carving of the faces on the bricks?
It's a company we use, it's, um, is it Bricks RS, Sharon?
Yeah, I hear it's Bricks RS.
Yeah, it's like a Bricks RS, you give them your main...
So they're going to sculpture my face on it?
Yeah, lucky that's a bust.
Actually, it was, it was a nice program because you, you typed it all in and it centered everything.
Yeah, so...
Well, thanks, thanks again.
Oh, no worries, no worries, it's the least we can do, you know, we've got a lot of good kids in this town and they deserve a good playground.
Yeah, well, you've certainly done the job.
Will you push me on this week?
Uh, yeah, I think so, and even we'll have the little toddler slings too, so I can squeeze...
Yeah, because I got short legs.
Yeah.
I don't do well at pumping.
Don't leave that alone.
Push the, push the button and just...
Yeah.
Pass on it.
Okay. I missed, I'm going to miss a meeting.
Nah, I mean, you know what, we are like, we have an awesome, we have an all-star group, we really...
Yeah, it's just the coolest people.
It's such a good group.
Well, you don't have to stop meeting.
Yeah, no, you know, probably will.
Start a social club.
We are going to do the, we are going to do the race every year, that's going to be an annual event and we'll use that money for maintenance.
Maintenance, yeah, because that's the other part of this whole thing.
Yeah, you don't want to set a project and then...
Yeah, you know, I haven't, I haven't seen you running the race.
Oh, I always say, I run a five K every year.
Yes, you run it.
You run it, you run it.
All the Roy boys have graduated from the bunny.
Yes, and we've had more Roy bunnies.
Oh, yes, I remember the Roy bunnies.
Yeah.
Nobody else will do it, Mark Roy might do it next year.
I don't know if the suit's tall enough for Mark Roy.
All right.
Again, thank you.
Yeah, I could be the bunny.
Yeah, no, you've run it before, haven't you?
No, I was supposed to be the bunny and then, um, I remember I got, I got delayed on that flight and I missed it.
Oh, but you have, I feel like you're running at this one's in the past.
Oh, I, I, no, I, I always get number one so that the bunny can have number one. Yeah, no, I almost did one year, but, you know, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you again.
Go Sox.
Yeah, 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 thanks for the update.
No worries.
Take care.
Have fun at the Howl.
Thank you.
Ciao.
So before eight forty-five, I have a few other things, um, the Bow Street property donation, we had from, proposed from Paula Long for MAP twenty. Um, I've checked the site out, it's just completely undeveloped, it's forested, I don't see any reason not to accept it. Um, the town owns a number of parcels in the area also, um, so...
So it'd be conservation land or something, huh?
In essence, yeah, I recommend the board tentatively, um, approve the donation, it still needs officially to be brought to town meeting, I suspect we're going to have a town meeting sometime in January or so, um, because we'll have the fire suppression system, which I suspect we're going to need to have an article for.
So move.
All those in favor, that was a good time.
Aye.
She lives on Circuit, she just wanted an update for the stop sign.
In stormwater management, Steve Hayward, Kathy Dray, myself, met with staff from GHD this morning. Um, the town along with all the other communities in Massachusetts, under a federal mandate to reduce pollution from stormwater, this is going to require a number of activities by the town that's going to include changes in the bylaws, specific schedules for storm sewer and drain cleaning and street sweeping, review of the construction plans for new developments, both commercial and subdivisions, uh, general education for the public and businesses and town employees and such. Next up, we're going to need another person, the Highway Department, for some of this fieldwork and I know it's not going to be just this, I know that Steve has got to push hard to get one more person for the Highway Department and that's even without this, in that during the time I've been here, the Highway Department hasn't really changed in the number of personnel, though they continue to have more and more streets added. Um, and now with these additional responsibilities and at least some of the storm sewer work has to be within Steve's jurisdiction because it's part of the layout of the streets or it's part of the infrastructure for drainage and storm sewers for the streets, um, so he's going to need someone to be out there in the field doing a lot of the monitoring and the active work of the cleaning and such. Um, but setting that aside, there'll be other expenditures to do this on a constant basis, so we may need a new line item for storm sewer. How it's going to be, what the jurisdiction is, is we're going to have to work out, um, you know, whether it's going to be Steve, whether it's going to be the Board of Health, whether it's going to be through the Board of Select, whatever, but we'll probably have some sort of additional line item. Um, I'm telling you this not because the, for the board to do anything about tonight, but again, just like with the recycling, I don't want people surprised when in a couple of months we're doing budgets and someone says, well, wait a minute, why are we doing storm sewers? Well, because we're now in that process of meeting the federal mandates.
Okay, perfect.
Then what, how much time do we have in order to meet the mandate?
It's going to be at least a five-year project.
Okay.
We won't have to do everything in the next twelve months.
Well, that's, that's what, because I'm sure some people are going to say, you know, when's it going to happen?
Is that it, Charlie?
I have, that's on my list, yeah.
Okay, so we're still waiting for eight forty-five, she's just a couple of minutes late and we sent a reminder to her.
I didn't send a reminder, but...
No, okay. All right, so do you want to take a five-minute recess?
She's got it till nine o'clock.
No, well, no, it was forty-five.
Eight forty-five.
That's what I said, she got it till nine o'clock.
So do you want to take like a five-minute recess until...
Because they can't stay up.
Welcome back.
And we'll, we return.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night, everybody.
Go Sox.
Go World Series.